We would invite all those here to join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power that the Lord give forever. Amen.
Is now seven o'clock? Shelby City Council needs call order. Please join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City, please. Full call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cutlet, here. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Gocken, here.
I have now entertained a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from February the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
For Lou.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, second by Mr. Martin, to dispense with the reading of the journal from February the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Full call, please.
Mr. Gocken.
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
That motion passes. And now comes the time for a public comment. If anyone has comments they can report, councilman, they come to the podium, state their name and address, and may address council with any matters that you have to bring forward.
Avery Mongol, I look to you, Mr. Crum. I'm here to talk about my Eagle Scout project that has worked. I would like to install some safety equipment, including a life wing and please throw me that, please, and four rescue lines to the reservoir. Now, the life wing will be stationed by the dock. I'm not sure if there's a map in the pens, but there should be. Okay, so the life wing will be stationed by the dock. Typical life wing, buoy, throw it out, people fall off the boat. It's very easy, so it just helps people to help people without giving themselves a start. The life wings, however, are a bit more versatile. These can be used for just regular water rescues close to the shore. Someone falls off the box and goes in, or it can be used when it's icy out, this freezing thawing of this type of season, and because there's ice fish going out on the reservoir as well. So this can help someone. They throw out the bag, hold it onto the boat, they throw it out, they can grab it, and they can pull someone maybe without going on the ice themselves. Now, I've already worked with most of you, and I really do appreciate it. So the project is planning to be finished within the next two weeks. Thank you. If you have any questions, please.
I'd just like to say, this is a wonderful idea, and thank you for doing this. No problem.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Good.
Could you just state for us your name and spell it for us, just so we have a spell?
My name is Avery Mongol, A-V-E-O-L-I, M-O-N-G-O-L.
Any further public comments?
Thank you very much. My name's Jay Sell, that's J-A-Y, last name Sell, S-E-L-L. I work with Aspen Energy at forty-seven Timber Oak Court in Powell. So the reason I'm here tonight is just to come and present to you all to talk about the gas aggregation. I met with the Utilities Committee here recently and discussed that we're coming up on the end of the term of the current agreement, and wanted to see if we could potentially pass legislation that would allow us to enter into the next contract. We've had a good partner in Constellation New Energy for years. They are now the biggest retail supplier in the U.S. However, they've exited the gas aggregation space in Ohio. There's quite a bit of things right now, moving parts at risk for suppliers. So it's just a different market area than what we dealt with before due to transportation costs going up significantly behind Columbia Gas in Ohio. The TCO transmission costs have jumped significantly, and folks are going to be seeing a pretty big jump on their bills here coming up, starting in April from that. So, yes.
If it might, please, councilman, that comes to the table, you want to hang around for a few more minutes?
Yes.
People will meet along.
Yeah, for sure.
Then you can give, I think there'll be questions when we look at that legislation.
Okay.
Good intro, but I'm sure you have more to say.
Yeah, I do.
But when that comes on, when that piece of legislation, I believe it's Resolution Number Six, two thousand twenty-five.
Yep.
When that comes, we'll reserve that time.
Sounds good.
Speak then. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Now comes the reports from standing special committees, hearing no more public comment. The Community Economic Development Committee reporting, Councilman Cutler.
We did not meet.
Did not meet. Okay, that makes that a short report. And the Public Works and General Operations Committee, due to various circumstances, did not meet. We'll link up the lost time next month, I'm sure. Traffic Commission did meet.
Yes.
And Councilman Cutler, would you just re-tackle that meeting, please?
Okay, so we met and went over this traffic survey that we have done in the Mansfield Avenue area, Technology Parkway area, Wareham and Lamp lighter Lane. So there's a few things, a few recommendations that they made, and we kind of went over those line by line. So I'm really kind of doing the same thing in my report to let you guys know what's going on there. So to start off, six point one, they recommended that the turnway on Lamp lighter Lane be considered for removal. We actually postponed that. And we're going to look at that at a later date after we get some more data. Then six point two, it was recommended they sign, put up a T sign at Wareham Road. We did approve that. And then six point three, they recommended to put up another sign on ninety-six, for Technology Parkway, and then we did approve that. And six point four, we, they considered the use of warning beacons or the use of light emitting diodes to be put up around the signs, and we did not approve that. And then six point five, it was recommended that a deer crossing sign be put up on thirty-nine on Mansfield Avenue. We did approve that. And then six point six, let's see, it was considered the development and use of access management policy with direct access to Mansfield Road. Are proposed a redesign, possibility of relocating restricting or confinement access drives can be reviewed in order to reduce the number of conflict points on the road. We did approve that. And then six point seven, was considering performing another speed study through Mansfield Avenue. We decided to postpone that. And then six point eight was a recommendation that the intersection cross history be reviewed after a year from the implementation of the improvements. We did approve that. Let's see, six point nine. The intersection of Mansfield Road and Wareham Road was determined to warrant a northbound right-hand turnway on thirty-nine. And that one, we decided to postpone to get some more information on that, like calls and things of that nature. And then the last one, six point ten, was overhead lighting at the intersections of Mansfield Avenue, like Lamp lighter Lane, Mansfield Avenue, Wareham Road, and East Main and Technology. And we decided to postpone that, just looking to get more information on Mr. Ren's business. And that was it.
And that sounds simple, but that took quite a while. Worked your way through all of it, right?
Yeah.
Recommendations for our consideration. Mr. Martin?
I have a question. It's been back to six point one. What was, I was confused on what that was, the Lamp lighter Lane, left turn.
Well, so there's, currently there's no left turn on Lamp lighter. And there was, the recommendation was to move it to the left.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought there was a left turn lane that was being taken out. I was like, oh, all right. So the left, in other words, coming out of there, there's restriction going left to go to Mansfield Avenue. Yeah, and that makes sense, because, I mean, unfortunately, if we don't remove that, people are just going to cut through the gas station, take the left turn anyways, unless we're planning on doing a left turn restriction out of that whole entire complex, which we don't have out of Drug Mart. So, you know, if people are going to obey the rule, they're just going to cut through the parking lots and do the same maneuver anyway, so.
Clarification is that the recommendation was for us to consider removing the left turn lane sign. The commission said we will postpone the move of that sign until we actually see what the activity is there over these next several months, and we will put up signage as trucks are exiting to the south from the Mickey Mart, so we do not have a semi truck get stuck up there. So there'll be some signs put up directing the semi trucks, no through trucks, so they will follow down Lamp lighter to Technology back up Wareham. So I think it's an idea of getting some observable data and see what that looks like here in the next several months. So there was a postponement of that recommendation.
And probably the biggest concern is the semi trucks trying to make the left turn lanes out of there.
Well, I can see waiting until we see how that traffic pattern is going to look, because we don't fully know.
Right.
Mr. Robb?
That was an experiment that was tried years ago with school traffic, and it was an absolute failure. People continue to make left-hand turns out of Lamp lighter on the Mansfield Avenue, even though the signs directed them to Technology Parkway, to Wareham Road, to the traffic signal that used to be here. I think I heard him mention a possible overhead light at Lamp lighter?
No, just streetlights.
Streetlights?
Yeah. Yeah, they didn't recommend that we put in traffic signals.
Why?
I don't know.
We are going to have some follow-up conversation on a couple other issues, and that may be, you know, just the question to ask. I think, actually, they would say the data did not support that, but they are opening up the idea of studying that speed, that forty-five mile per hour of speed, that have a speed study out there. I think if we could have, Mr. Geist, maybe they could give us a paragraph or two beyond the data of why they felt that that was not warranted at Wareham. Can you do that, Mr. Geist, please? All right, Mr. Martin?
I appreciate, because that was actually the minimum next comment, that there was no mention of streetlights, because that's kind of why we wanted to do this in the first place, to see.
Traffic control.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions in regard to the Traffic Commission report? Thank you, Mr. Cutler, appreciate it very much. Council, the whole meeting, Councilman McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee, the whole met on Saturday, the twenty-second of February, for three hours, to discuss the two thousand twenty-five appropriations budget. In specific, we covered streets and utilities appropriations. We meet next, this Saturday, the eighth of March, to finish the remit of the appropriations, which include general fund, parks, health, capital projects, the CHIP program, leasing fire. I'll be meeting for about three hours that day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Gocken in regard to his report? Thank you. Move forward to reports of city officials, of the mayor's report. Since our last council meeting, I've been occupied the typical mayoral duties and delights. On February the twentieth, we've added over our monthly mayor's staff meeting. On the twenty-fourth, I met with other county officials for a roundtable discussion with Senator Mark Rumichuk and Representative Marilyn John. It was facilitated by the Richland Area Chamber in Economic Development, and Ellen Heinz took charge there. Very interesting and productive meeting. Attended meeting on Terryo with fellow advisory board members of the Area Agency on Aging, District Five. On February the twenty-eighth, I attended an Economic Development NOW conference out at the Kent State Stark Conference Center. Among the Richland County contingency was the very own Economic Development Manager, Jessica Riven. And on March the first, so March came in like a line, I think that's right. We held another Main Street ribbon cutting ceremony with the celebration of Beyond Blessed Boutique at forty-one East Main Street. And so that is my report for this meeting. Any comments or questions from me in regard to my report? If not, move forward. Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. Mostly the same activities that go on every year in my office. A lot of year-end reports. I read the financials for the Health Department last week. They've submitted to the state. The Tax Department is in full swing. We are short a person. We have a person starting here shortly. We don't know that too much, because I don't know about previous employment and such, but we'll give all that information at the next meeting. So that's, that's good news. We're excited for that. Obviously, appropriations are in full swing. Another item that has come up is our accounting software has we've received the notice that, hey, this is the end of the line for it. And so we are entertaining demos on various new accounting softwares. The ones we've looked at so far, all were very good. There will definitely be a price increase from the old software that we used. It doesn't matter where we go, it's going to be significant. And so that will be working with that appropriations. And that will also make the latter half of the year a bit of a challenge as we learn that software for implementation for next year. So that's pretty much my report, sir.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, the new tax clerk and her arrival will be very timely as we enter the tax collection season, and April fifteenth, looming on the horizon. Any other comments or questions for me to come in regard to this report? I hear you've done to move forward, Mr. Geist.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you, sir. Joe Geist, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Last meeting, requested that I share a file, site we set up for council, so that was done. Emailed you all the link. You got any follow-up questions, let me know. Safe for us, the school travel line is already on there, so. And also, for issue two this year, states we consolidate the engineering is being done at this moment right now, so hopefully we can bring that to council also soon to, but won't be able to work a contract until July first, but please get it on the contractor's radar, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Geist? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geist in regard to his report? Saying done, move forward then to new business? Any new business that you brought before council? Have a note from our project coordinator, who believes it would be in order for us to, as the council, make a motion to allow the items to be installed at Reservoir. Or Reservoir, one Reservoir? Reservoir Three. To, just to make it official that he has that allowance from Shelby City Council. Joe, Lou. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to allow items to be added at Reservoir Three as described in our packets. Does that say particularly? Maybe all know the intention? For the discussion, discussion on that. Well, we're, full call, please.
Mr. Gocken.
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
That motion to allow passes, thank you, gentlemen. And for the new business. I move forward then to unfinished business. The future use of the Main Street Fire Station. And Mr. Geist has provided all of you with a document there, and given Philison on the latest. So I'll let you go first, Mr. Geist, and I'll finish up. Hey, Mayor?
The first document you have there, that is the actual parcel that was quickly indeed to the city in nineteen forty-six. However, it was not recorded. So when the property was going through the process of going from the CIC, excuse me, the schools to the CIC, that property was included because it wasn't recorded at the time. So doing this action, the CIC has already agreed to, we'll deliver on Monday, but basically quitclaim this parcel back to the city. And then after that, we can go to the next page on that. This is our, would be our recommendation. Once the other parcel is transferred over, we can come back. I just want you guys to note, you'll see on this line right here on the west side, that is actually on the up of the top of the bank of the Black River, because that parcel goes all the way over to our other parcel where the Napoli's building was. So it was the, working with our surveyor, he thought it'd be a great idea, which I totally agree, which would be like to propose to you guys, is keep that property there, give it to the other parcel. Whenever there's a bridge replacement or whatever, we don't have to go back through to the new owner and go through easements and everything like that. The actual agreement, here's the existing fire station building, the old fire station, I guess, for that roadway that goes through there. We do have utilities, so the document will also, you know, give us our utilities at that time also. So we, we're already working with the law director, so at the seventeenth meeting, we'll have the resolution for the first part of this to get that through.
Mr. Martin?
So if I understand this correctly, the highlighted version basically goes to the east side of the bank of the river.
Correct.
And then the rest of it, we would quitclaim to the owner with the CIC, right? Or is it?
So on the west side of that highlighted?
Yeah.
That would go into, we were basically linking that over to the parcel where the Napoli's was. That way we would keep that part.
Got it. So if we need to do anything else, it's a city property, not?
Correct.
And the?
Whoever gets the new, we wouldn't, they keep them on, and they wouldn't have to deal with it, so.
Makes sense, sir. Thank you.
And I do have a letter written stating that the old fire station no longer of municipal use. This is putting in the final details of these parcels, so that will come in order as it should be. So it's moving forward, Mr. Martin?
So we anticipate getting that probably the next council meeting, possibly?
Yeah.
The first part of that, accepting that parcel from the CIC, then we can get everything cleaned up after that, and hopefully remaining after, we can keep moving on and go with the next part.
Yeah, for my part, I just need to correct parcel numbers and everything. They're all settled. So let's move it on, gentlemen. Martin?
This is under additional unfinished business, so I apologize for kind of speaking on turn here, but I know that we've, we have talked about the smoke stack. And I'm wondering if we need to talk, have a discussion or put it under unfinished business, talking about the future of the smoke stack, or are we not to the point where we're at the discussion phase of what we're going to redo there? I know we talked about it during appropriations, but.
I'm good with putting along these for next meeting, and maybe give Mr. Ren some a little time to bring some ideas to fruition, just at least general concepts.
I appreciate that, David.
Any other unfinished business? Now, let's move forward to legislation.
Ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-five. Bay Canyon Alley that runs parallel to East Main Street between lots one, three, one, four, one, five, one, six, thirteen ninety-six, part of O.L. thirty-five S.P. five, and part of O.L. forty-eight S.P. two, within the city of Shelby, Richland County, Ohio.
We have a third reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler, for the third reading of orders number four, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
I know that it had been requested to get some information about the parking situation there, and I don't know that we have received that information.
I can email that to you.
Sorry, I haven't been getting any city emails for some reason, so. Those, they'll be on my project list this week. My understanding is that they, they're no longer going to the iPhone. You have to do it through the Outlook on the iPhone, so I have to switch over everything else. So my apologies if someone sent me emails or blessed.
I don't know if I sent it to you directly, or will council? Need to add some folders to it.
This is just like that. Hopefully, would please, council, while we postpone this, we can postpone to the end of tonight's meeting, so we can get the other information here before we vote on that. Is that, so we don't have to wait? Because then I would want to get through some others, other people waiting for some other stuff here. So I would just make that motion to just postpone this till?
End of legislative?
End of the legislative business for this evening.
I'll sign you that.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Cutler to postpone our orders number four, two thousand twenty-five, to the end of our legislative agenda. Discussion? Full call, please.
Mr. Gocken.
Yea.
Yes. Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
That motion passed. Mr. Martin?
If I could add, Joe, if you have that, if you could possibly get that to chief, just print it off for us, where we can find it. Appreciate it. Thank you. And again, my apologies.
Second.
Ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-five. Amending section fourteen ninety point oh-eight, chapter fourteen ninety, exterior property maintenance of the codified ordinances in the city of Shelby.
Lou, second. Second.
For the motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler, for the second reading of orders number six, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Full call, please.
Mr. Gocken.
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Orders number six, two thousand twenty-five, passes the second reading.
Resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five. Approving of plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the two thousand twenty-five paving project within the city of Shelby, Ohio, declaring an emergency.
Who's resolution to take on pass? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, for the passage of resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number five, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service and safety of the city of Shelby, herein referred to as the local public agency, LPA, to apply for safe routes to school infrastructure fund, and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of resolution number five, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Mr. Cutlet?
I'd just like to say, this is a no-brainer. They're paying for a hundred percent of the cost, so this is the only one on the city's progress.
Yeah, that's your point. Mr. Geis?
I did, when I sent my email to you, I did, you know, outline the, you'll see in that document, there's a number of things that they recommend. This is just the start. The most you can get at any time is one million dollars. So it's going to take a lot of work, yeah, this week, to get all this in here and so forth, so I tried to give you guys as much information as possible, but the sidewalk on Shelby Avenue and those red flash meetings were very highly discussed with all the group, and that's what rose to the top, so that's where we're at.
And Mr. Geis, he really worked with, sort of, city school officials, our safety forces, and many others in the community here, and he's done a wonderful job working with the safe, safe routes to school people. So we have a document before, so we're keeping this project moving, and I agree with Mr. Cutlet.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, another thing I really liked about the way this all went down is they got a lot of input from residents of the city, I mean, they went to a basketball game, they put out surveys to parents, having just tons of information around the place. There was a lot of input from everybody on the side.
Good point, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number five, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number six, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a governmental aggregation program agreement with a natural gas supplier when the market rates are favorable to provide projected savings for the city's natural gas aggregation customers and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, for the passage of resolution number six, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion?
Thanks, don't say it make yourself, but I just wouldn't. So, again, J Cell, Aspen Energy, really appreciate you guys having me up here tonight. I want to just quickly explain what we're doing, why we're here. To give a quick background, we've been around since two thousand, we've assisted the city with your gas aggregation program. This is the tenth year now, so we've had a good relationship, gone through a couple different suppliers over time, and we're at the time now where we need to find a new one. As constellation, one of the largest retail suppliers in the country is excellent market, so there's a space out there for somebody, we need to review offers, go out, shop it, and frankly, what we're asking for is flexibility and depth there within that process to be able to move quickly. Rates, market-based rates have been jumping a lot. Some days it's down forty cents, today it was up twenty-five. So we've seen prices jump more than maybe I've ever seen though. I've been doing this, this is now my twentieth year doing this, so. Been around a long time, and we're seeing a lot of volatility right now in the market, so what we ask is to be able to move quickly if we identify a program that's going to be saving folks money that projects either as a fixed price to save people money in the winter time when they're using a lot of gas, or something like, we used to have like a, an adder, a variable rate program, maybe a guaranteed savings program, like we used to have with volunteer energy years ago. You know, if we could find something like that, that would be something that we should probably jump at as well. Just to note, any of our programs that we have, the suppliers all have no opt-out fees, so anytime folks want to go out and shop on their own, they're free to do that at any point in time. The city's program just gives a vetted option for folks that we know, the suppliers that we work with, that they're good suppliers, that they're going to do a good job, handle things on the back end well, and then work here as a liaison as well for the city, work with the mayor and Mr. Ensmann as well, on just making sure things go smoothly. So anytime there's questions at all from folks on council, anybody here within the administration, feel free to reach out to me directly, I can also take calls from people. So if folks have questions, pass them along my way, I'm happy to answer any questions as, as we go. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cutlet?
So how many suppliers are there out there in Ohio right now?
So we work with probably about twenty of them right now. As far as aggregation suppliers, we're probably talking about, maybe about a handful of them right now.
Well, I mean, like, if you, I went out to look for one, not through you, I mean, how many of these out there?
So there's a lot. If you go on Appus Appus, there's all sorts of suppliers, all sorts of different offers out there. It's the website created by the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. So folks can always go on there and shop, it's hard to, hard to go through and figure out sometimes for folks that have never done it before. When you go on right away, you really need to be able to click through the filters, and filter by only fixed price, no early termination fees, no monthly fees. You really need to kind of know what you're doing to get in there and have it work well, which is another reason why your aggregation program is so great, is because it's vetted, it's something that's, you know, that's proven. So, yeah, there's lots of suppliers out there, and folks can always go shop at any time, but, you know, a lot of the offers come, you know, with introductory sort of rates, early termination fees and monthly charges, so.
So I think that kind of leads to my point is, with all these, all these different suppliers out there, it's nice to be able to work with you, and you do the vetting for us and figure out what's the best thing for Shelby, so that anybody that signs up with the program will know that they've been vetted and they're a good company.
Yep, that's the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlocklin?
So can you speak a little bit on opting out or coming back in?
So it's an open door policy on that, so if folks want to opt out of the program, first of all, when we find a new supplier, it will be a December start, so we've got a little bit of time in there to watch the market. I'm hoping it softens up as we get into spring, out of winter. Hopefully, at that point in time, we can identify a little bit. As far as the opt-out process, once we select a new supplier, we're coming up on December, about forty-five days prior to the start, folks will get an opt-out letter. Okay, it will identify all of the terms and conditions of the agreement, what the prices are, how long it goes, you know, how they can opt out, either by calling or by doing it through the website. So they can opt out during a twenty-one day period at the beginning, and then anytime they want to opt out after that twenty-one days, they can, at any time at no cost to them, so that's a big part of this program, there's no fees to get out. Opting back in, there's an open door policy on it, it will take a building site for two to be able to opt out and then to be able to get back in, so there's a little bit of time with that, but folks can come and go with this program and kind of utilize it as an extra tool for them, if they shop on their own, to be able to have that to use. So that's kind of what the opt-out process is, and I'm happy to answer questions if folks, you know, have questions about the Appus Appus website, what our offer entails, our suppliers, the market, anything, feel free to send them my way, I'm happy to address those questions individually.
Just one more question for you. So we're passing this as an emergency, and I'd just like you to speak to council, why this needs to be done as an emergency, why it's so important to have it done right away.
It's a great question, because it really is going to give us that dexterity to be able to move. If we find an offer that's either a guaranteed discount program, or that looks like it's going to be way below where the winter's going to come in at, we need to be able to move quickly. A lot of times, frankly, heading into council meetings, if you have a specific price and a specific term with how much the market is moving these days, you really don't know whether or not the next day, you're going to be able to honor that rate, or if it's going to be underwater. That's a serious problem. So passing legislation like this allows us to have that flexibility to be able to move quickly, say, hey, merschag, we've got a great deal for you, here's what it is, and to be able to act that day rather than try to set something up with legislation in front of council. So that's really the reason why we're asking for this, and I know you guys don't take emergency stuff lightly at all, I understand that completely, however, I think this, I think this is an instance where it will be highly beneficial to be able to have that freedom of, of wanting to move, so. Thank you. Yes?
I know the discussion. And Mr. Cell?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number six, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor and director of public service to enter into a customer service area of Rumpke Waste and Recycling Services for the disposal of the non-hazardous bio-solids sludge generated at the wastewater treatment plant, declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of the resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Mr. Cutlet?
Yes, I would very soon be speaking of emergency, and this is.
Absolutely, thank you. Emergency, I'm hoping to keep us out of emergency legislation, but the party, the review of the contract, our, our, most recent contract expires a couple weeks ago, by several quarters back in December, looked through the review, it just, the timing just wasn't working out, but the need for emergency is the sludge riding that is at the wastewater treatment plant hole. We have not pressed any sludge since late April, November of last year, and we're in a position where we're ready to start pressing soon. So if the person is superintendent, he is, that we can push us to do it as an emergency, that way we can even have the authorization to the next thirty days to start pressing.
Mr. Ensmann, can you speak to what's the difference between this and the previous contract, what's the fundamental difference?
Yeah, this, this here is a three-year contract, the one that just sunshine was a ten-year contract. The previous contract, we had the, it was a non-bio sludge with leachate reimbursement in there, so the last contract, we had a contract where we allowed the sludge to be delivered over to Rumpke, Rumpke Landville, where they brought leachate back, of course, we had to be stopped receiving leachate several years ago. It had adverse effect on the treatment facility, so this, this does not have leachate in it. So this is just strictly the, the hauling of the sludge waste to Rumpke Road, Rumpke and Rumpke Landville.
Similar rates, or?
The rates are a little higher. Previous ten-year contract rates. We were at forty-two dollars a ton for the non-hazardous bio-solids, this rate, it increased to fifty dollars. So there is a slight increase there. And to make a note here, this does have, this agreement here does allow Rumpke to adjust the rates if they so choose, and it's a may, it's not a shall, but it is a may, adjust the rates, and it's by the Sumo Five Press Index, so, which is fairly common, even if they're pressing, it allows the, the pressing contractor to adjust rates annually according to the Sumo Press Index.
Thank you, Mr. Ensmann. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-five, passes. We'll now move back to ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-five, which already has been moved on the floor, postponed to this moment, so I'm ready for discussion on this ordinance. And I think you all received, at least, a map or diagram, so without any more doubt, Mr. Martin?
Yes, appreciate it. Again, my apologies for not giving that email. Thank you very much for making a contingency for us. So I'm seeing here, it's about a hundred parking spaces, which is so this is.
This, this part is.
No, this, the red is the land, this part is.
Maybe Mr. Geis can explain a little bit and then help us out.
Well, yeah, I'll bring this back up. So what I did is, here's the alley that's being vacated.
Yep.
Okay, so, I should have, I didn't do that.
Oh, okay, that's worse.
So this property right here belongs to this person here. So they could have an entrance and exit out of, you know, if they left this an entrance right here, this is vacated here. This alley is still also coming in here, so if you look at the PDF, I did not draw up, so there is a possibility for more room over here for parking there, so to be more than a hundred. This was just a real quick and dirty, so someone could come in, they can know, or they could, you know, you can come around back this way. I just did a quick and easy just to give you an idea. I don't know how they would design it for that, but we don't do that, that's up to the owners, so. But there is more area over here for more parking also, but.
Thank you, Mr. Geis.
So there'd be a hundred plus.
Any further discussion? Mr. Martin?
I'm not confident that would be enough parking for that size of building, but that's, that is what it is here, I don't think it's significant enough to book discounts.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Order number four, two thousand twenty-five, passes its third reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of the ordinance, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Order number four, two thousand twenty-five, passes. Now ready for any miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business you brought before council this evening? Mr. Martin?
I just look forward to meeting with everybody on Saturday, should be a perfect every time. And I also like to wish my wife a happy birthday, this is her birthday, on the first, so. She absolutely hates it when I do stuff like this, but of course, I have to do it, it's kind of the rule of marriage, right?
Sure.
Happy birthday to her, and with that, I'm with council.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. McGlocklin, for adjournment, roll call, please.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Motion passes, adjournments, seven forty-seven.